Call the meeting to order. Bruno Posada, if you would do the invocation.
Do your prayer with me. Gracious, loving, and holy God, we pause for a moment to take a breath, to give thanks for this glorious day that we've all experienced here, to recognize that there is work before this commission that is important work, work that takes wisdom, that takes compromise, that takes conversation, that takes diligent attention. We confess as those of us who are voters how we champion them on Election Day and then criticize them the rest of the year. And we would ask that you might give us as voters a sense of patience and the long-term look. And we pray to our commissioners that they might continue to be serious in their work, that they might have the common good before them, recognizing that it's difficult, it's impossible to please everyone, but that Frankfurt is a city that has been here yesterday and is a city that will be here tomorrow, and that we are stewards just for today. We thank you for their willingness to serve. Give them the blessing of your peace and your love as they seek to do the best for us. And in the end, we will give you thanks for their wisdom and for their willingness. This we pray in the name of the one who is holy. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mr. Hayden?
Here.
Mayor May?
Somebody want?
Yeah.
Kind of new at this, somebody about minutes?
I made that we dispense with the reading of the minutes for January 14th, January 25th, January 28th, and February 6th, and adopt them as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? No.
Aye.
Aye. Ceremonial items?
No. Let me just, sir.
Citizen comments? If you have one, if you come up, just say your name. And you have, as I remember, five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Bailey. And as all of you know, I ran for the city commission in the last election. I can assure you, I am not, and I will not be running again. So my comments are not meant to be sound like I'm trying to be a candidate. That I'm just sorry, but I will not be a candidate in the future. However, a couple of decisions that you all have made in the last few months, or a couple of months, I guess, have made me have concerns that I need to raise. I actually plan on staying out at the arena and not being involved at all. But to basically not establish a commission on human rights, I have a problem with that for some of the reasons that you all have designated that you have problems with it. I am a true believer of separation of state and church, so that is one of the problems I have with the way the decision was made. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here to talk about the position that you just recently hired for the city manager. A lot of the information I have has been printed in the State Journal, and I will repeat some of it, but also I have some other issues I'd like to bring to your attention. The person that you have hired or bringing in, you mentioned that, or in the paper, a couple of you mentioned that you're bringing them in because of his experience. But let me reiterate. The city that this gentleman has come from has half the population of Frankfurt, has half the budget that we have, and one-third of the number of employees that we have. But yet, for some reason, we feel it is necessary to pay him an 8% raise to come to Frankfurt. When was the last time our city employees received an 8% raise? If you ran up the last eight years, had they gotten an 8% raise? I don't think so. Maybe they have, but I certainly haven't seen it. This gentleman is receiving a year's salary from where he's at, and we're laying him here at such an enormous salary that I think is unconscionable for what we're doing at this point. What the commissioners are already talking about, we need to reduce our personnel budget somewhere in the neighborhood of 8% to 10%. If we do that, what more damage are we going to do to the city employees? Where are they going to get that money at? It should be from less staff or less salaries. At least in paying him an 8% raise, the day he comes to work, he's only getting five days of leave time, a vacation leave, and a salary of over $2,500. That's another cost we're going to be paying. We also will pay up to $12,500 in moving fees for this gentleman to move to Frankfurt. I have no problem with that. Once he gets here, we're going to pay $300 a month for him to drive a vehicle. What's wrong with owning city vehicles? We're only going to save money for this gentleman. I don't see it. If he leaves involuntarily, or if you terminate his contract, a part of your contract that you signed with him, we're going to pay him six months of full benefits and salary. You know, in December of 2011, the agency that he worked for before, he had a six-month termination contract as well. But by the end of December and in the January meeting, they moved that to 12 months. So if he comes here with a six-month termination fee, are we going to turn around and change that to 12 months? I certainly hope not. What things, while we brought him here, or what things he has done, is he made an agreement between the YMCA and some of the agencies up there to have an aquatic center. What hadn't been discussed, or what I haven't seen discussed, that you realize the cost of that to these 13,000 citizens in that city? The cost of that facility is $15 million. But yet, the voters in that city approved all the bonds to pay for it. They have a TIF program in that city, just like we have here in Kentucky, and they approved that. I'm not certain I understand all of the voters' ideas in Frankfurt, but I find it maybe somewhat difficult that what will approve a TIF is going to afford someone to create a $15 million and $20 million project in Frankfurt at this time. What is the bond rating that they have up there? And I'll make one last statement, and I'll throw it. What is the thing that Moody said about the bonds that they issued for this center? He wrote that they have a great bond rating. I won't take that away from the city. They have a great bond rating. But Moody's made a comment that one of the challenges that this city is going to have is due to the exposure of the enterprise risk of having a community wellness center project.
Yeah, do you all have any comments or questions? Go ahead.
Before, before you go, thank you. Jerry, thank you. And just to make a few notes on what you've said, that I don't think the idea of a commission on human rights is totally over. There were three people that were still willing to discuss it when we were talking about setting up our priorities. That topic will again come up during this commission. As I know, there's two of us. I don't know of the third one. But there are three of us that agreed to bring it up to talk about. As for the city manager, I hate contracts. I don't think contracts are needed. I think it's ridiculous to think that you need to apply for a job only to get a contract to say that I can resign and get paid when I leave or if I get fired. But due to the circumstance of the job, the job itself has created this throughout the environment, throughout our nation, for all city managers. And as for the aquatic center, I'm hopeful that this city one day will have something, not just an aquatic center, but a recreational center for our community. It's the city's job to provide services for the people who live here. It's also the city's job to help provide for economic development. And the way I see things going in this country is that manufacturing jobs are what's coming back. And if I were someone who ran a manufacturing company, probably someone from Germany or China coming to the U.S. to build a company, I would want to make sure that the community I was building my facility in provided adequate stuff for my knowledgeable employees that I'm bringing to the community. And I don't think it needs to be a $30 million project, but I do think that something Frankfurt has that no one else in this state has is the capital. That I'm hopeful that somehow we can tie in with state government and get something built here. And it just may be a hopeful little girl sitting up here who thinks that dream can happen. But it is what it is.
Anybody else? Go ahead, sir.
Charles Bogart, I live all in the West Side town on Pin Oak. And I appreciate what the commissioner said about the city providing services. I first moved here in '65, and I was very pleased with the services the city provided. Garbage pickup. You put stuff up, and they picked it up. If it was real big stuff, yeah, you called, they came, but they picked it up. Now, last year, I know some of you weren't on the commission, we did a change. Last year, it was decided if they weren't in the right container at the right spot at the right time, we couldn't pick it up anymore. If it isn't in the right bag, we can't pick it up anymore. Now, I want one of you to go out into, your Taco John's is on 127. That's Wood Hill. Please turn there. You'll drive down a short distance, and you'll find a pallet furniture. It was not picked up last Friday. It was not picked up this Friday. Drive on up farther Wood Hill, and you'll find another pallet stuff that was not picked up Friday. Now, look at this. Three Fridays, the city has not picked that up. That is garbage laying on the streets. We got garbage laying on the streets in Frankfurt, and the city will not pick them up. I've talked with the sanitation people, very nice and everything, whether I understand correctly or not. But my understanding was, last year, the city commission told them that if it isn't in the correct bag or aren't in the correct bag, not to pick it up. Now, I understand part of the problem there is they got the garbage in the recycling bin and the recycling in the garbage bin. So we can't pick that up. You know, where's common sense within this whole thing? What happened to the bit where this city used to provide garbage service? I have no problem with the garbage. I put my stuff out like you want. I got no problem with that. But unfortunately, we've got a whole bunch of people in this community, maybe I'm over-stating it, who have no comprehension of what it means. They don't understand. There are those apartment complexes. They come, they go, they go, they come. You guys got a problem with them. Why can't you just simply pick it up? Why do you have to go and locate? Last time we went through this, apparently, the apartment owner was in Florida for the winter. They had to get hold of him before they get... Where the heck do you got to get hold of the apartment owner? Pick the stuff up, lug it all, and then if it's within your property, as I understand, define them, you know, put the fine down and everything. Why do you have to find them first before you can pick the garbage up? Okay. Can't you guys do something to put a little common sense back into this garbage pickup that if it's out there, even if it isn't in the proper bag, pick them up and everything? We're getting the raccoons and the possums back. My neighbor just trapped two raccoons. We're getting paper and debris blown all over the street. What are we just talking about? People coming in and putting... Okay, if anybody starts driving through some of our areas, at least over in our area, the paper and debris blown alongside the road, the stuff laying in the street, it just does not look good. Okay, I've gone far enough on this. I would appreciate you to relook at this garbage thing. I got no problem with the garbage can. As is, I use them. I like the idea of the little... But there's people in this town who do not understand how to use them, and the rest of us community is suffering for this. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Bogart, first of all, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention because that is one of the areas that we were planning on tweaking. And I would not have known about that area had you not brought it to my attention. We primarily know the areas that are around us or someone comes to us because we need to hear that. Now, we have received a lot of favorable comments that were originally negative about the actual recycling program because I think that...
I think it's a great program. I got no problem with that. I compliment you for this. It's just the inability of them to pick it up if it ain't in the right bag. That's the part that just blows my mind away. Wherefore, from '65, when I first came here, through, what, 2011, 2012, you guys were able to do it. And then all of a sudden, on a magic day in 2012, you no longer know how to pick up stuff that you knew how to pick up for the previous 45 years? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Bogart, we're actually going to be addressing that in the work session next month. It's on the agenda for next month to look at the whole garbage.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other citizen comments? Yes, sir. Go ahead. Just state your name and thank you.
John Rogers, 311 Wilkinson Street. First off, I want to say that I realize that it's unfortunate that the only people that seem to get up here and talk to you guys about the trash are the people that have a lot of problems with it. I actually have no problems with the trash. In fact, it's beneficial to me because I don't make very much trash that I feel finally that is a little vindicated. I actually, because I compost and recycle, not something that's too terribly difficult, I make a really tiny amount of trash, have the smallest trash can. And sometimes, I don't even have to put it out every week. It's just me and my girlfriend and my dog. And we don't have kids, and we don't... I don't know. We just try not to, you know... Maybe because I don't have a car, I make a lot less trash. Maybe that has something to do with it. My options are limited. But I just wanted to say that I think there's probably... The program needs to, maybe, there always needs to be... We always need to tweak everything that we're doing. But I want to say that I think the program's been good as a person downtown. I think there are parts of the town that suffer, but there are many parts of the town that I think are a lot... You could do a lot worse living in other places. In fact, Frankfurt is pretty beautiful. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. And I also wanted to thank you all for the resolution being on your all's agenda tonight for the bicycle-friendly community. So thank you very much.
Ordinances?
Ordinance 4.1, by title, and ordinance of bending the Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Chapter 32, Section 32.03, meetings, summary. This ordinance provides that as of March 1, 2013, the Board of Commissioners will meet in work session on the second Monday of each month at 5:00 p.m. and meet in a voting meeting on the fourth Monday of each month at 5:00 p.m. And that's the second reading, so there'll have to be a vote on it.
I made that we adopt the ordinance.
In discussion?
Sure you want to change it?
What?
Just being sarcastic.
Thanks. Call roll?
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor President Roach?
Yes.
Orders?
Not on the agenda, sir.
Okay. Resolutions?
We have a couple of resolutions. 6.1 is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application to fund preservation, education, seminar workshops for the city and authorize the mayor to execute all grant-related documents. There are over 1,400 historic properties noted in the city, and due to their age, they're especially in threat of being under-maintained. In recognition of this and the need to equip property owners with the best maintenance practices while making their homes energy efficient, the city desires to provide preservation, education outreach. This proposal will involve hiring a preservation specialist to conduct two-day seminar and workshop for a varied audience comprised of various city boards and homeowners and business owners. The seminar training will also include strategies to make historic homes more energy efficient without compromising the building architecture and features. And there will be a one-day workshop in the field that will include guidance to homeowners on how to cost-effectively repair historic windows. This is a certified local government grant in the amount of $11,000, with the federal share requested, 60% of the award from the Kentucky Heritage Council, and 40% of local match, $4,440, will be required from the city. While any kind of services will be provided by the city, the total local match will need to be funded in order to secure the professional services to assist the project. The match will need to be funded from the general fund in this year's budget. 6.2 is a resolution to support Walt Mike Frankfurt's application. Oh, you voted on... I'm sorry. Yes, Mayor, since you're taking over, we need to vote on Resolution 6.1.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry.
I might be getting a little rusty here. But why are we, like, having this as a resolution when it looks like that we could actually have to be spending $4,400? Why is this not an act or an item? We're on resolutions right now, and I'm wondering why this is a resolution as opposed to...
Because it's for now, it's an application.
Okay.
And that's what will be required of us if we're approved on the application.
But if we were to be approved, we're going to be out $4,000. So I just think if we're going to be spending money, it probably should be in order. I mean, I'm fine with this tonight, but I'm just wondering why this is a resolution as opposed to an order? Have you all, have you generally been doing these under resolutions?
To file for applications.
And then later on, when it's approved, and there are documents that are required to be signed by the mayor...
So we have a chance once again.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Is this the time we can have any discussion on this?
Need a motion and a second.
I'd like a late motion that we have discussion.
Move back Commissioner Roach.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hayden. Discussion on the motion. For the item?
Well, normally, there would be a motion to approve the resolution. Then there'd be a second, and then there would be discussion. So the motion should be to approve the resolution. And if there's a second, then there'd be discussion. If there's no second, then the resolution would die. Or, excuse me, the motion to approve the resolution would die.
Well, I got to take care of...
Approve this resolution. Oh, okay. Well, his is to discuss, so, okay.
But you can withdraw that one to start over if you want to.
That'd be the clean.
Got you. Well, I just had a question. I don't know the process.
We had to withdraw.
Yeah, withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion.
Question being, under what situation will we ask any questions about this? In other words, trying to understand what we're going to get for the $4,400, that type of thing.
I'm going to ask Rebecca.
We can have Rebecca and Gary.
That's what I was wanting to know.
Who's responsible for the...
In other words, to sort of get a sense of whether or not it's worth us spending $4,400 before voting to approve a resolution.
So Rebecca Hall and Jay Mueller?
So I'm sorry, what is the exact question?
Well, I see that you all have recommended approval. I understand that. What, have we done these type of things before? How many people go to them? Does it, do we get much bang for the buck? Or is this just something that, you know, where maybe two people will show up, and we spent $4,400 for two people? Have we ever done something like this before?
Not to my knowledge, we haven't. And we've gotten CLG grants before, but what we had been doing was doing surveys of South Frankfurt, and that, we finished that up this past cycle, or we're getting ready to finish it. But the Heritage Council recommended that we do preservation education because of all the properties that we have. To my knowledge, we have not, not since I've been here.
Not through a grant, but we have had a couple of seminars, one-day training seminars on how to repair windows. And there was a good local turnout on that. There wasn't a cost involved. But when the grant opportunity came, and the Heritage Council has informed us that the Architectural Review Board members are not up to their training hours, this fits within the cycle of that to get them their training hours as well. So we felt it was important to do, or at least apply for.
That's all. All the questions I have, nothing else, has any? Thank you.
I do just have a serial... For the Architectural Review Board members, what would the equivalent training typically... Would the cost exceed what this is? I'm just trying to figure out if it's worth $4,000 on our part.
It's more than training for our Architectural Review Board members. We budget money for them. Unfortunately, none of them have gone to training in the last 12 months.
If they were to go to training on their own without this grant?
It shouldn't cost $1,000 each.
Would it cost more than this $4,000?
No, it'd be less. However, this will allow any citizen, any other staff, any other neighboring communities that wanted to send their individuals to get this thing training at no cost to them. So that's the benefit, is getting our citizens educated. Other board members yourselves, it's helping up to anyone and all.
Do we have any... Let me just, I think Commissioner Roach has already asked his question, but my experience, and it's several years back, with trying to get citizens to come in to learn something was, I think I sent out several thousand invitations for 20 people to show up. So I just wonder, and that was your question, I think, Commissioner Roach, is it really a high... I'm just wondering if we cannot do it more efficiently in-house. But that's just a question. I guess you thought about that, though?
Yes. And the staffing hours and our ability. And to get the public to show up, we felt if we had a recognized speaker, that would definitely up the ante on the attendance.
Well, I'm okay with the resolution part. I just have one question. Is this in your budget?
It's currently not in the... Well, I had to turn in my budget this morning, no later than today. So it's not in the budget. It needs to either be in the planning budget, the city commissioner's budget, or the city manager's budget in the upcoming proposal for the 13, 14 calendar year.
Okay. Second question, if this goes through the process and is approved, when it comes back, are we automatically obligated for the $4,000 since it's gone, would have gone through the process?
I believe you still technically could deny the submittal of the grant.
You don't have to sign the grant agreement.
So if we vote for the resolution, we could still not...
Get us in the door. If they say we are the awarded cities for this money, then you had to authorize the mayor to execute it and obligate the funds. And at that time, you can say yes or no. And they would get the money, I presume, to the next runner-up.
If we were to say no, though, would that have hurt our chances down the road if we were to make application for a different grant?
I don't know that one.
Probably, well, this is just through the Heritage Council. So if we told them early on, they do like to get their money expended and obligated as soon as possible. But if we pretty much knew immediately and told them within a month, I don't think it would hurt our chances in the future.
And I will say, we solicited a cost from one speaker. We haven't done a formal bid to see if other speakers are cheaper. But the one speaker that we were aware of, this was their cost range. So that's how the money came about. So we might find a cheaper.
We might actually not have to be out the four thousand four hundred, is that what you're saying? We could actually?
Possibly, yes. But the heritage is funny. If they say they want to give us eleven thousand, they want us to spend the forty-fourth, or the four thousand dollars, or come up with something else to do it. They don't like to get the money back. I find that odd.
Well, we could find something to use the money.
I would hope so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Any other questions? Do you want to vote on tonight, or you want to pass over?
I'm okay voting.
Okay. Entertaining motion, then?
I move that we approve the resolution for six point one.
Haines for six point one.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henn. Is there any further discussion? See you then, clerk please call her.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Henn? Yes, Mayor May.
Yes, six point one is adopted. Next item is six point two, it's a resolution supporting Walt Mike Frankfurt's application for bicycle for the community designation from the League of American Bicycles. We have someone here to speak on that tonight.
I think so.
I was going to say, I don't even know if you want to make a presentation, but, all right. Are there any questions? If not, I'll answer any questions or entertaining motion.
Move readout.
Second.
Move to adopt six point two by Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Haines. Any further discussion? See you then, clerk please call her.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henn? Yes, Mayor May.
Yes, six point two is adopted. Next item is six point three. It's a resolution supporting reforms to the county employee retirement system to make the plan sustainable, sound and secure for current and future employees. I've had a few questions about that, since we have a large number of state employees in our district, and there's some, maybe some questions. I think the commissioners have questions, so entertaining questions that commissioners may have.
Well, I have one question, and it says the resolution further encourages the General Assembly to enact these reforms during the 2013 regular session. They're in session now, so has anything happened?
My understanding is going to be a hearing tomorrow, some discussion, and it'll probably be voted on in committee in House State Government, and then voted out of committee and possibly out of the House this week if they can agree. But that's always subject to change.
The Senate passed it. Mayor May is exactly right about the House. The latest I've heard is it's going to end up going into special session because the House is going to pass a different variation than the one that's in this resolution and the one the Senate passed, but I'll be honest with you, we don't know for sure.
Commissioner Henn, did you have a question?
I just said right.
Okay. I used to get it saved. You're in the blind spot.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
I'm in this weird curve, and I can't see down there.
Commissioner Bowers, do you have a question?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the city manager answering some of my questions earlier today, but I just, there are parts of this that I just do not agree with and could not support. So if somebody makes a motion, I'm going to vote no, but.
We don't have to, we could pass over.
This would pass, and then that way, the other one would have already gone through its process and maybe put on a different agenda.
If it's not going to pass the way it is up there, then I don't see, unless people really like this, but I've got problems with it.
Let me just, of course, I'm kind of for it, but I can understand if nobody else is. But the question we have to ask ourselves, regardless of what plan is approved, if we don't get behind a plan that keeps our retirement, our pension costs at around where they are now, which is nineteen percent for regular employees and thirty-nine percent for hazardous employees, we don't have a chance of doing the things that we want for our employees and doing the things we want for the city. So whether you're for this one or another pension reform that's going to keep it the same, and the one the House is trying to get out, probably isn't going to work because they're going to try to, they're going to try to do things that, where you kind of square a circle. If you've noticed, they've not had any actuarial information out about their plan. It's been really limited. So, you know, whether it's this plan or another plan, I think we, as a city commission and as city government, have to get behind a plan that keeps our pension contribution costs flat as a percentage of payroll, or we will not be able to do anything that we would like to do, like give people raises and do things for the city, because if they continue to escalate, there's not going to be any money. So I'm for this plan, but if we, as a commission, aren't for it, then I think we need to get behind something that's going to keep our costs down.
Let's try and see the schedule, because somebody, I had it, but can't find it right I would personally feel more comfortable, there's some changes that I'd prefer to make to this, and I'm not sure exactly how we could do that tonight. I would just prefer to pass over, meaning we don't vote on it, but if the group wants to vote on it, obviously, we could do that.
I'd rather pass on it and vote on it at this point.
Okay, so is there any objection to just passing over this agenda?
No objection.
Which doesn't mean that we don't support pension plans. And the one thing about cities and counties have continued to make their share of payments into the CERS, so that's the portion that is really keeping the CERS program going. All right, if no objection, then we'll pass over item six point three. Item seven, consent calendar. I will, for the city manager and all, so remember, all those members who signify their presence at the meeting will be considered to vote in the affirmative on the consent calendar items unless they file proper vote modification forms with the city clerk. Have there been any vote modification forms? Okay. I'll clear out the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven point one is to approve and authorize an agreement between the City of Frankfurt and the Franklin County School Board of Education, providing for the use of, by the Franklin County Public Schools, of the city's sports facilities and parks for the city's use of the Franklin County Public Schools tennis courts, and to authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. There's only a minimal financial impact to this. Seven point two is to approve a memorandum of agreement between Kentucky State University and the City of Frankfurt, and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents as may be required. This agreement allows KSU to use access equipment and tanks at the city's wastewater treatment plant for an experiment in growing fish. Under the memorandum of agreement, KSU will pay the city in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars per year for a three-year period for the use of those sewer facilities. Seven point three is to authorize the mayor to sign a full release of mortgage for property located at sixty-six Jones Lane. The property owner of sixty-six Jones Lane signed a promissory note, mortgage has since been paid, the amount owed in full. The document will be filed with the office of the clerk of the Franklin County Court to release the second mortgage. Seven point four is to approve change order number two for the Louisville Hill Stormwater Separation Project, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents associated with the change order. This is the final balancing change order for the project. This change order covers four items as follows: additional asphalt-based material on Taylor Avenue, non-skid asphalt surface on Louisville Hill, sales tax reimbursement, and final balancing quantities. Change order number two is in the amount of seventy-six thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-nine cents, which brings the total contract to one million three hundred twenty-three thousand one hundred ten dollars and sixty-nine cents. Seven point five is to approve a balancing change order to the contract with Basham Construction and Rental Company for the rehabilitation of approximately five hundred feet of failing brick sewer in West Main Street, and replacement of approximately two hundred and fifty feet of failing twelve-inch gravity sewer in Catfish Alley. Change order number one covers costs due to delay in construction and credits for quantities not used during construction. The original contract was two hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars. The change order is a reduction of eleven thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars for the total revised contract of two hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. It's not often you get that from Mr. Scow, a lower contractor that comes in, so thank you, Mr. Scow. Seven point six, to authorize payment to the Property Value Administrator for 2013 City of Frankfurt Property Tax Assessment, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. This annual fee is established by Kentucky Revised Statute 132.285 for the use of county assessment services for determining the 2013 city add-on tax values. The invoice is forty thousand dollars. Seven point seven is to authorize submission, excuse me, of an application to the Commonwealth of Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet for approximately ten thousand dollars for law enforcement service fee grant funds to aid in driving under the influence enforcement overtime, and authorize the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. This does not require any match from the city. Seven point eight is to consider authorizing an application for the Highway Safety Grant Funds and authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. This is a grant through the Governor's Highway Safety Program, collaboration with state and local governments. The City of Frankfurt would like to apply for funds associated with personnel and equipment not to exceed a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. There is no match requirement for this funding. Seven point nine is to authorize the purchase of a Caterpillar three oh five ECR LS excavator for the Street Floodball Division of Public Works, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Using the Commonwealth Kentucky Master Agreement or the state price contract, Public Works Department would like to purchase a mini excavator to be used in the Street Floodball Division. The approval will replace the older of the two rubber-tire backhoes being used. The replaced backhoe will go to the dealer and the trade-in value used to offset the cost. During the fall of 2012, a rubber-tired loader, it was a 1999 Hyundai wheel loader, was sold, and the money from that sale will be applied to this purchase. So the contract is, per the master agreement, the excavator, as outfitted, has a selling price of fifty-six thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, applying the trade-in value of seventeen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, and the thirty-four thousand six hundred dollars from selling the loader brings the cost to the city to four thousand four hundred dollars. This amount will be paid out of the floodball maintenance account. Seven point one zero is personnel. We have two resignations, resignation of Rick Kelly in Sew, who authorized payment for accrued leave as Sewer Tech Four, resignation of Harold Moore in Finance, Administrative Specialist, authorized payment for accrued leave, the appointment of Ricky Phillips in Transit as a Transit Driver, promotion of Ernest Howard in Public Works from Public Works Tech Two to Public Works Tech Three, and a transfer of David Jones from E-911 to Finance, Telecommunicator to Administrative Specialist. Also, pardon, yes, also permission to make two conditional job offers for the position of Patrol Officer One in order to continue in-depth background investigation of candidates. These positions are to replace one officer that recently retired, and another that is on the long-term military deployment and is on record as not planning to return to the city position. These conditional job offers are contingent upon successful completion of physical, psychological, polygraph, and drug screen examinations of the candidate. Also, request permission to make conditional job offer for the position of Telecommunicator One in order to continue the in-depth background investigation of the candidate.
Consent calendar, is there a motion?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Haines.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Flynn Henn. I almost called you Flynn. If there's no objections, the consent orders are adopted, and we thank Mr. Kelly and Mr. Moore for their service to the city and welcome our new appointees and transfers and promotions. Next item is old business. Does any commissioner have old business? Okay, see you then. We have one item under new business, ten point one. It's to consider a request for a hearing regarding an employee matter, so I don't know if we need any background information, or if you want to ask the city manager questions.
If I may, Mayor, I'm willing to listen to a hearing from any employee who brings it up, and I'd be more happy to listen to one whenever.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
So I will make a motion to listen to a hearing.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Henn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haines. Now is there any discussion? See you then, clerk please call her.
Mr. Roach?
No.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Well, I think our staff, I trust our staff, but I guess I'm willing to hear if what you're just saying. So I guess I will say yes.
Commissioner Henn? Yes. Mayor May?
Okay, I'll vote yes to hear the dismissal. So that item is passed. Next item is, is there any other new business? Commissioner Henn?
If I may, I just wanted to ask the board and the staff if our new city manager, when he takes office, I didn't know if we wanted to just maybe make a day and invite the public in, if they want to come in and meet him one day and offer that, just something to put on the table to think about, and allow people to come in and meet him, just have maybe a meet and greet day with our new city manager. It's no cost, just people could come in and meet him.
Commissioner Bowers?
I think we did that for another new city manager, didn't we? Had a reception? We had a reception, I think that might be nice.
Invite the public?
Yes, we did.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, so it sounds like there's enough support for that, unless someone objects with this, say administratively, the staff can handle, schedule on that. That's okay? Okay. All right.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Bowers?
I think the motion was to have a hearing. Are we going to decide tonight when that is?
We would suggest that the commission make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to care of sixty-one point eight ten one F as.
Tonight?
The hearing would be held tonight, and the department head and supervisors are here and prepared to provide information to the commission, and the individual that requested the hearing is also here tonight.
Okay.
It is, my understanding, Mr. Moore, that per all the personnel that could possibly involve with the hearing, it's best to keep it closed, although I personally like to see things more open. Is it our request, or could it be to the board having a hearing?
What would happen is that the commission, someone on the commission would move to go into closed session, and would go into closed session, and the individual would be advised that the hearing would be held in closed session unless he requests that it be held in open session, in which case it would be held in open session. But that's up to the employee pursuant to statute.
Okay.
Well, move that we go into closed session under.
Will we be coming back out? I would just like to make, are we going to have commissioner comments at the end of this hearing? I would like to make a brief announcement if I may.
Commissioner Bowers, do you mind if I?
I'll withdraw my motion.
I didn't actually recognize you yet, so I was going to say, I'm sorry, I don't want to ignore you, but I knew you were going to say that. That was a delicate way to say it, I'm sorry, I knew. Commissioner Bowers, did you want to go ahead and?
Are we televised tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think it's important that I inform the public that I finally have a landline number. It is here at City Hall, so if you need to call me, the number is three five two two one six zero, and my email is now working, and I'm actually checking it regularly now, so that's lbowers@frankfurt.ky.gov. That's right, Ramona, isn't it? Okay, so the number is three five two two one six zero, so I have a number that you can reach me on now. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you say that was two one six zero?
Two one six zero.
Okay, thanks.
Did I get it right?
No, I was just wondering.
Okay.
Not going to do anything. Just kidding. Okay, does anybody else have any other notes before we go into the closed session?
I do need to get that number again, sixty-one point eighty-one F.
One F. Six one eight ten.
Sixty-one point eight ten one F, as in Foxtrot.
I move that we go into closed session under sixty-one point eight one zero one Foxtrot.
A second to.
Move back Commissioner Haines, second by Commissioner Bowers, go into closed session for 61.810-1F. Any discussion? See you then. Clerk, please call up.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henn?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, so we go to closed session, we'll go... So I didn't...